除了秘书长以及贸易局也参与了 我会邀请麻省先生，秘书长 拿到提问按钮我看到这是现在发生的谢谢主席在新的财政改革中我们将推进发展计划和相关的交通结构的研究 我们也打算在2019年上半年寻找资金，对龙库滩等 coastal 区域的项目进行研究以此来增强 connectivity，改善环境，发掘发展潜力，推进智慧城市 initiatives 建筑桥，连接 MTR 凯伦贝斯站，和未来凯伦文化中心，以及车坪河项目 更多，我们刚刚进行了技术可行性研究，在昆汀区域的 advanced 工程项目为了提高公共工程项目的 performance，我们会升级项目管理办公室 我们也将实施 2.0 的建设，以此推动创新、professionalism 和 revitalization 并带领建筑行业做出改变我们正在为一个 major 项目领袖的 excellence center 做好准备在公共办公室中培养 innovative mindset，让他们拥有 leadership skills 我们也会数字化工作监督系统，以提高 performance 在工人短缺和老龄 workforce 的情况下我们会优先推广文化安全 在需求方面， skilled workers 的需求方面，财务秘书提议 预备200 million 美元，以加强建筑 workers 的培训在去年的 December 里，我们获得了2.5 billion 美元的 在接下来的六个季度中，这是一个很大的 priority 在今年的 29月29 日，我们首次收到第一个申请文件 该申请的结果将在第四季度揭晓 森林养护，FSC 提出设立200 million 美元的都市森林支持基金新的 initiatives 将被推出，以加强公共教育和宣传 在正确树木养护方面，同时也加强专业人士的 professional standards 最后一个问题是饮水 为了确保饮水安全，我们 proposed 改正水工秩序以加强建筑和安装内部 plumbing 系统和水源供应 2019 年，公共 consultation 会在 我很高兴接受提问，我的 presentation 就到这里博士黄丽娜王和博士陈雄泰 让我们先从麻省先生开始，一分钟 谢谢主席首先是对秘书长来说它看起来是这样的它的名字是 技术研究，关于 Kennedy Town 交通基础设施的交通 infrastructure 通过连接东港 metropolitan 交通可行性研究 秘书长可能说，好吧，它已经被你给了，但是答案是 no 这个封面在右边这是一个这是一个大报告的子项
和交通影响评估它与卡依桥有关当它将与 Kennedy Town 交通联系时我们需要知道那个网络在香港 island west 的 Kennedy Town 的额外交通 burden 所以当我们讨论550 million 美元的 funding proposal 对于研究的由发展计划这是第一个问题 我的问题是025 和027 这是第一个问题第二个问题是如上所述 对于550 million 美元的 funding proposal，政府将提交 发表计划我想让政府承担 秘书长，你应该听说过很多次 对于香港 2030+，你已经承认 且数据不正确 所以秘书长，你能告诉我们吗 当你提交研究的 funding proposal 对于 ELM 550 million 美元 之前，你可以给我们一个更新 关于土地需求秘书长 关于第一个问题，我会回去再看看 之前，麻省先生提出了其他 papers 我接受了请求我觉得我们应该只是遵循信息的 access code 我会回去查看如果这个在 code 下允许，我不看 为什么我不能提供 papers 关于香港 2030+ 研究将基于2030+ 中的数字我认为 在这个年度内，某些数据将会 available 秘书长，你是否建议 如何时间 lapse 我的意思是，如何区分 如果你没有数据 available 你想让我们迈出最大的一步对于你的 proposal 的最大的一部分土地创造请理解我们的担忧实际上并不那么重要 无论如何，我会在问题上跟进 关于 051 关于凯特 tourism note 和土地 reserved 用于目的按照 administration 凯特 tourism note 网址已经在今年的 land sale 程序中已经包含 在2017 年政策文件中它将用于创建 tourism icon 所以我想知道为什么 有了延迟，而且网站已经 正在这个年的程序中如何这个 tourism note 的位置也有另一个问题 044，这是回应号码 关于通过 partnership scheme revitalizing 史史建筑有三个批次我理解参观的人数非常不错 有些超过100万 我更担心2017年 Viva Blue House 在2017 年赢得了奖这个 Viva Blue House 在万岔 located 是一个 premier 地点，而且它赢得了 acclaim 但是在计划下 只是稍微超过100,000 你能告诉我们为什么它是一个赢得奖的项目它在这样一个好的地方它与 publicity 有什么关系它与 visitor restriction 有什么关系两个问题 谢谢您，徐先生，你的问题 让我先回答最后一个问题，然后麻省先生 贸易局办公室的主席可以先回答第一个问题关于 Viva Blue House 目的目的是允许现有的 inhabitants 继续居住在那里并邀请其他人来所以对于 Viva Blue House 在此，许多人 你知道，经过 观看 Blue House 不在这里被数清 因为他们不进入，但他们经过 通过组织活动并与其他项目相比黄女士来回答其他问题关于凯特 tourism note 它的位置是在 OZP 它用于 tourism 相关的目的对于凯特 tourism note 当网站卖掉后开发者可以按照 OZP 来行动他们需要遵守规则当他们提交 town planning board 的许可时这个网站已经在今年的 land sale 程序中已经包含它会根据 OZP 中使用的计划进行发展有任何后续吗你是否建议会有 land sale 要求或者它们不是 mandatory 要求黄女士 town planning board 需要镇 planning board 的许可会有 restrictions 接下来，麻省先生，四分钟 058和059 这两个回应号码是 059 059 关于马里乌市的土地 reclaimation 我会拒绝这一点不推而且 贸易局的回应， however 仍然相同 CDD 会派遣人员进行项目审查也就是说对于交通影响和公共 private housing 的担忧 在此，CDD 实在太复杂包括一项关于 reclaimation 一个岛屿的 artificial island 而且没有 estimated breakdown 对于这样的人员的 personal emoluments 参与审查的练习这是你回应的主席 你能告诉我应该做什么，关于评估 estimates 第二个问题是回应号码 059 关于发展计划 在此，去年 2018-19 年公共公共公共公共公共公共公共公共公共公共公共公共对于海报的生产 请告诉我，秘书长 比如其他的 major 项目，在过去 NENT 中这是不是一笔巨大的数目你花费了很多精力如果你仔细看一下回应把海报在在2018 年的 September 完成了 2018年但是发展计划 2018 年的 vision 不在 October 日期宣布即使 task force on land supply 在暗中然后按照这个回应这项研究预计在 2019 年的第二半由于在 2018-19 年的 studies 上没有支出
如果这种情况发生，你怎么设计 leaflet 和政策文件什么时候什么时候发展计划 2018 年的点名而谁设计了 leaflet 有两个问题谢谢 首先，关于发展计划 2018 年的那些发展计划并没有什么先进的工作我认为它非常接近政策文件当它被主席执行官决定时 但是对于政府来说，我们不会 简单地放弃想法但如果我们可以当然我们会考虑这里投入了多少 manpower 不，没有专门的工作人员 发展计划 2018 年的成本与你能给我们一个比较吗我没有头脑中的信息但我会给你信息当我回去做比较时 对，与 说 anti-north anti-northeast 和洪水桥 接下来，麻省先生，四分钟 谢谢两个问题首先这是一个很简单的问题东港我们支持它但是它是东港但是只有一个 MTR 站那个非常糟糕的计划人们可能会想住在青夷岛但是因为它太 inaccessible 人们 不觉得它吸引人，而且有严重的拥挤 上一次我问关于东港和跨 bay 线路但你没有说什么关于有多少个站点会在 artificial island 上使用发展项目监督阶段会有 reinforcement 联锁当它们当它们固定时会有确认 risk form 是什么 是签的，然后会有 form to collect to collect 砂土或 cement 砂土供应商会引用 risk form 来释放送货 好吧，相信我，我说 我说我们应该得到那么多但是看起来有水泥的送货砂土被挖掘而所有 reinforcement 装点被覆盖但现在发现有很多 incomplete risk forms 所以哪里发生了错误如果 说相信我，给我混凝土 你不需要提取 risk form 好吧，MTRCL 会被 MTR 部门签但是对于政府由工作部门你需要所有信息才能提供混凝土我认为我们看到香港约翰麦考大桥的问题以及洪坑站的扩展你会尝试填补这个缺口吗有两个问题有时我批评 好吧，卡依桥有三个站点 三个站点谢谢关于 MTR 项目和香港约翰麦考大桥那个是主导局发展计划如果水泥供应商送货给工程师它仅需要一个专业的签名或者他们需要 risk form 麻省先生，请理解 当有一个调查正在进行时我不想给你答案没有仔细思考或许我会给你书面回应我不想说 接下来，女士黄丽娜王，四分钟 我还有一些问题要问 D E 是 D V D E V B W E 1111 是关于水工监督我知道 administration 是会继续增强和 reviewing 水工秩序和水工规定经验 workers semi-skill workers 和 plumber 你在你的回答中说你会也加强 plumbing materials 热水龙头和饮水 fountain 建筑和维护室内 service 我支持你我有一个问题我知道发展局希望对于已制造 modular housing 在凯清凯清 estate 有一些单位含着管道和开关有过多的 lead 在饮水中所以 housing authority 把停止含着管道但现在我听说他们允许开关水管道隐藏的管道隐藏的管道在香港 outside 如果这种情况发生，这意味着这些不是 这会是一个漏洞吗 好吧，如果你对外 中国当你谈到当你谈到 outside Hong Kong 这意味着当你谈到测试你必须要求这些工人去那里所以你可以确保 plumbing materials 特别是隐藏的管道是安全的已经很难在香港 regulated 你现在想 regulate someone outside Hong Kong 一个 licensed plumber 我认为 好吧，我可以察觉麻烦 现在你发现了过多的 lead 在水中你想填补缺口但现在你采取了一步退步这意味着好吧你你允许水管道要要生产与 mainland 已制造的部件对于 public housing estates 我我感谢女士黄丽娜王因为因为她的建议我们加入了热水龙头 好吧，已制造的部件 不必须在 mainland 上生产它可以在其他世界生产我的想法是如果这些部件含有热水管道它是否在香港生产的还是不是标准所以我们现在正在提高标准 比如说，首先 如果水管道在已制造的部件它必须由 licensed plumber 打理我们遵循当前的 statutory 要求这意味着水工水工必须在在 plumber 的责任下或者是 designated 人一个是 licensed plumber 在执行监督不只是任何人这意味着在制造过程中 licensed plumber 在香港会负责监督这个过程整个时间请打开女士王的麦克风但他们不是香港 licensed 你不能把他们视为 liable 你怎么 regulate mainland plumber 在香港任何 worker 可以安装水水工安装但是它必须在 designated 人是否是否 licensed plumber 或者 licensed worker 同样适用于 mainland 上的流程这意味着工作流程必须在所有时间 Under supervision 由 licensed plumber 打理这意味着 licensed plumber 必须 liable 但我们不知道这些 semi-skill workers skill workers 在其他世界是不是受到同样的培训和标准我在指向一个香港 licensed plumber 在 outside Hong Kong 我们委托了一个顾问为我们负责检查和测试所有的管道所有的记录必须在位并检查比如说 non-destructive tests 看看有没有 lead 在 joint 看看所有部件都在香港允许但是管道工作被隐藏在隐藏之前会有检查这就是为什么所有都是 Under supervision 由 licensed plumber 打理 接下来，博士陈雄泰，四分钟 我想问 59 46 57和59 麻省先生提出 你已经花了2.8 million 美元在 publicity 之前意见被创造我认为不可想象那个政府如此有效他们可以产生所有材料在政策文件之前生产在59里那里提到 有2 million 美元资格对于保护等于发展计划 好吧，没有什么 在发展计划所以什么是 publicity 在057 一位麻省先生提问 好吧，有一项研究 在2018 年中期内部资源律院使用你说很难提供 breakdown 所以他们说 好吧，概念性的研究 发展计划 So they said that, well, the conceptual study of Lantau, of Lantau Tomorrow will be done. With internal resources. When will it be completed? This is what I think. Well, this is a major project. You can't just use civil servants or just several people within the bureau to, to do it behind closed doors. There will be a dedicated office. I want to know about the timetable, the, the scale.
So just these two questions first, and if I have time, I will pursue zero four, uh zero four six. Thank you. About Kowloon Chao and the reclamation, I think this is rather the public's focus. But it's long term, it's, the population intake will take place um ten years later. And in fact, for the whole pro- project, it also involves conservation in South Lantau. Development in North Lantau and conservation in South Lantau. So we have set up the Lantau Conservation Fund. In terms of publicity, we would like to engage the local communities as well. So coming back to Kowloon Chao concept. It was built a long time ago in twenty ten when we discussed enhancing the land supply strategies. To twenty thirty plus, the task force on land supply then had a discussion on the East Lantau, Lantau Metropolis. At this stage, however, we believe we have had sufficient deliberations. And that is why five hundred million dollars will be set aside for the purpose. I can give you a breakdown of the five hundred million dollar fund. Zero four six, please. Let me ask about zero four six. Mister Porche asked about Lantau Tomorrow. And he asked about Kowloon East and Kun Tong and whether the same approach should be adopted. To carry out reclamation in Kun Tong Typhoon Shelter. What I'm concerned is not so much about reclamation. According to the administration's answer. It seems that the Water Sports Centre will be built in Kun Tong. Which is in line with the KDTA uh planning. Can you tell us more about that? First of all, Doctor Chang is correct. The government has no plan to carry out reclamation at Kun Tong Typhoon Shelter. Because of the number of considerations. As for the Water Sports and Recreational Centre, I'll refer to um Miss Au. Well, the Water Sports Centre will not be built. Exactly in Kun Tong Typhoon Shelter. But around it, we have three short-term tenancy applications relating to water sports and recreational activities. And the lands department is processing these applications. Any follow-up questions, Doctor Chang? Please switch on the mic. Thank you, Chairman. Kun Tong, strictly speaking, is not my constituency. Very rarely would I hear about these activities going on in Kun Tong. In other words, I think Kun Tong Typhoon Shelter is protected under the Harbour Protection Ordinance and that development is restricted. So it is not the case that you can have dragon boat race there anytime you like. I just like to know what development will take place there. Secretary. So Wong. Well, in short, reclamation will not take place there. About the water body, at the moment, it is used as a typhoon shelter. But in future, water sports could be. Uh possible. And in fact, nearby, there is also the water body which may be suitable for boat raising, for example. Perhaps I can further elaborate the point to you later. Um actually, we uh. We did some explanation before, but uh it may not be sufficient anyway. Doctor Helena Wong, four minutes, second round. I'd like to follow up on the last question. The government has decided to adopt prefabrication construction model. And engage non-local workers to carry out plumbing works. Have you seriously consulted the plumbing workers? Have you learned any lesson from the lead-in water incident? After the incident, not even the Housing Authority dared to use the same method. Why are you now so relaxed as to allow concealed pipe work to be conducted outside the territory? You say inspection will be carried out before concrete is poured. But can you really check everything? You have no jurisdiction to put, um, put those workers um behind bars. They are mainland workers. Why can, uh, how come you can tolerate such risks? Well, let me speak to Doctor Wong. I think we need to consider the broader picture. We are short of construction workers. We adopt MIC and we use prefabricated materials. Because quality control is so much easier if the insulation takes place in a workshop rather than onsite. In terms of MIC, Hong Kong is lagging behind. In Singapore and the UK, they also allow piping, uh pipe work to be. And to be carried out. Before the. Prefab materials reach site. In terms of the procedure, as long as we can guarantee safety of drinking water. And indeed, in other countries, this problem has been solved. I'm now speaking on behalf of the Housing Authority. I don't know when or if they will adopt this technology. I can only say that the government is heading in the direction of more MIC. In the private sector in the future, how many will, um, how, uh, how many developers will use MIC? I don't know. I'm not really against that, Secretary. If you can expedite the whole construction process, you will have housing ready for more people sooner. I'm just saying that. At present, the current ordinance doesn't regulate workers outside the territory. Well, licensed plumbers will need to supervise the workers there. Well, but they are innocent. They are not those who practically are doing the work. They don't know what materials to be used, for example. Uh is that the case that they will be actually working in the mainland, not in Hong Kong? And what happens if something goes wrong? Who should be held liable? I wonder if there would be disputes arising from these issues. For MIC, I think it's all right if you have prefab materials. And then when they arrive in Hong Kong, you can then engage local workers to do the work. And then the W S D can over, can supervise the work as well. Instead of doing an inspection six months after completion. Well, MIC, the Module Integrated Construction Method is such. That if we do not allow concealed pipe work, it is in conflict with the concept itself. What we mean is that the whole production is carried out in a workshop or in a plant. And if other countries are able to solve the problem, I think we should give it a try. But I also agree with Doctor Wong that we still need to further discuss with members on how we, how to ensure safety. Doctor Cheng Chong Tai, second round, four minutes. About zero two two. Many members asked about the response actions arising from two super typhoon mankut. And the aftermath. So first about the tree failure report and the damage. We understand that over sixty thousand reports were received. The situation is very serious. According to information across the territory, we still have about six hundred spots with. Fallen trees and branches yet to be cleared. My question is. Uh have you reviewed, reviewed your um response action? Well, in fact, according to some, there were hiccups. In handling the aftermath of Typhoon Mankut. And criticisms about the government's inefficiency is. The government's outsourcing mechanism. Because cleaners work for outsourced contractors. And they, they get paid wages on a daily basis. That means. Uh if they drag on their work, they will be able to get paid more. From the public's perspective, however, it is a completely different picture. The, so the problem lies with outsourcing, according to some. My question is whether you have conducted a review. Despite the large number of fallen trees, why is it that we still see so many fallen branches and trees not yet cleared? Have you reviewed the situation, Secretary? Allow me to, to answer the question. Uh why is it taking too, so long? Well, quantity is of course the major factor. We still have some five hundred outstanding fallen trees. And we are working things out with the relevant departments. These trees may not. Uh may not be situated near pavements. That means they may not have a direct impact on pedestrians. They may be on government slopes and they will be cleared in the coming weeks. In fact, the government is conducting a review. In response to Doctor Chang's observation. Well, in fact, the Security Bureau is the lead bureau for this review. But the Secretary for Security isn't here today. Our take is that the review should be conducted, uh should be completed before the next typhoon season arrives. And then they will come to report to the electrical as soon as possible. Chairman, of course, I understand that we should put this question to the Secretary for Security. And I've also heard comments about frontline discipline services. In handling the aftermath, the government engaged volunteers to clear the debris. But according to some. They actually caused obstruction. We need to consider the special arrangement for this special typhoon. Storm surge is, or super typhoon. Uh it's getting more rampant in Hong Kong in recent years. Can I be given more time? Well, there's just me and the other members, so, so give me another minute, please. So about this question on Typhoon Mankut, long coastal areas. The Electrical Complaint Office has received a number of complaints from residents living in Hang Fuchun and Chiang Kwan O. And they are concerned about the government's preventive action for low-lying areas. Like Hang Fuchun. There. It's a repeat of such incidents. I understand that there are recommendations. Uh residents, however, are asking whether this is due to the change of coastline. Because after reclamation. The tidal waves have changed direction, um causing a more serious impact. To the neighborhood. So about the. New towns built on reclaimed land or other places near coastal areas. In the face of changes along the coastline because of reclamation, et cetera. Whether they need to devise more, um newer measures to combat the problem. All right, this is a comment. Doctor Chang. In fact, if you don't mind, I'd like to uh speak to you about it as well. Take Hang Fuchun as an example. Earlier, in fact, we explained to electrical. Uh and we used a new terminology. Well, the flood in Hang Fuchun didn't happen because of rising sea level. But because of the storm, um the storm surge. And the, because of the tidal waves, um they, they. There wasn't the time for water to subside in time after breaking through the breakwater. And because of climate change, we are looking at other possibilities. For example, whether at appropriate locations, we can put some um dock rocks there to break the waves. We need to conduct a scientific study first. And in the second half of this year, we will commence the study.
Next is um, Miss Helena Wong again, speaking for the third time. Thank you. Well, I would like the um. Director to do more consultation, perhaps they should come to consult us. I would like to ask about the Dongjiang water. Well, a number of members have mentioned about this and mine as well. But how come that, but I don't know why they have not been answered. I want to uh ask about the number thirty one. Well, I have spoken to the director previously. Well, I see that for the Guangdong authorities. They have already released a document in the middle of the month. It says that from He Yuan to another section, the Dongjiang River course will be dredged. To reach over two point, by two point five meters so that vessels can use Dongjiang. If the river is made deeper. It will affect. Water quality near Taiyuan Pumping Station, which is where. Water is drawn to, for transportation to Hong Kong. They will use machinery to dredge um the riverbed. That means we are paying to buy muddy water. And it won't just be muddy mud. There may be some toxins or toxic sediment. So I am quite shocked by this. Because you have never consulted. Hong Kong people, you have never um asked the panel. And I don't know whether you have talked to the Water Supply Department of Guangdong. They said that the work will start soon. How come that Hong Kong is kept in the dark? I'm very concerned. Because we use every year about four billion dollars, about four point eight billion dollars. For eight point two. Uh billion cubic meter of water. If we spend money to buy substandard quality, either we won't be able to use the water. Or we have to spend another sum of money to try to purify it. Have you spoken to mainland authorities to ask them not to touch Dongjiang River? Another question is, are there any public works to increase? Local water resources, whether it's construction of another reservoir. Or uh, or, or um seawater desalination. Because as you can see that they don't have to consult us. And the Water Supplies Department is, is quite passive. It's like sitting duck. So would you be able to get the report? And can you voice an objection on behalf of Hong Kong people? And if they ignore you and proceed with the project, are there any measures to prevent pollution of Dongjiang water? We need some answers, otherwise we don't have to spend about four billion dollars to buy dirty water. Mister Wong. Well, in relation to this plan. Well, it is the Transport uh. Department of Guangdong Province. It's a very preliminary idea. Experts are asked to give their views. My understanding is that the.
My understanding is that the Water Supply. Department of Guangdong Province is also asked to give to make some comments. Because Dongjiang water is not just for Hong Kong people. A a number of different provinces rely on Dongjiang water as well. I know that there is a working meeting. We will try to get more information from the Water Supplies Department of Guangdong Province. We have been doing a lot of work. To diversify water resources supply in Hong Kong. We have water seawater desalination. Uh we have started with the tender process, we are vetting the tender documents. We're also. We have also started infrastructure works to supply gray water or recycled water in in new territories. And and along Anderson Road, there is also uh waters. There is also a treatment works for gray water. Do you would like to ask for the fourth round? Yes. Let's continue to talk about Dongjiang Water. You say that this is um. The idea of the Transportation Department. So will you? Speak to them because Hong Kong because Hong Kong is an important stakeholder. Well, Dongjiang Water is for people's livelihood and it's being um sold to Hong Kong for political purpose as well. Would you tell the um? The Water Supplies Department to ask them not to touch the Dongjiang Water? Would you also promise us that you will try to get a report for us? But it's not the case that we we can forbid them to do any kind of works along Dongjiang Water. But I think the most important thing is that and the work, whatever it is, should not affect the water quality of Dongjiang. We will talk to the Water Resources Department. Of Guangdong Province. We will have to first get some uh information to find out whether it is a proper report before we can get the information. I'm sure that well, they are fully aware of Hong Kong people's aspirations and demand. We have. Well, uh the Development Bureau and the W S D has the responsibility to ensure the water quality of Dongjiang Water. Because eighty percent of our population uses Dongjiang Water and we pay for it. We should require the Guangdong Province to be transparent. And to keep us informed and allow us to make comments. Because if everything is planned and then we find out, it'll be too late. So at what stage? Is the is uh is the proposal in? Information is very important. Because if the government doesn't chase for information for us. And you wait for um. Us to find to to be the last to find out, I think it is really bad. You 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 just ask us to pay. Of course, so well, Dongjiang um Dongguan people in Shenzhen, people living in Dongguan and Shenzhen will have to drink water as well. But I and I don't know how they do consultation there. You have to tell the Guangdong Province that about our views because we are important stakeholders as well. We have to try to um express our views. We we don't go there to talk to them. You do, so we can only ask you questions and I will continue to chase you so that we will have the information. And when you've got the information, you come back to tell us about it so that we can um. Decide the way forward. We will talk to them and of course, we will come back to uh forward their views to you. About the Water Resources Department. You may recall that they have given us a lot of information. And they're quite transparent. Previously, they have opened their facilities of Dongjiang for legislators. I recall that after the visit legislators were quite happy with the um safety of water of the water. But at that time, there was nothing about dredging the the river. Doctor Cheng Cheng Tai, I was going to go, but then I thought, well. Uh there is no one here and I have some questions to ask. It's about um. Zero three eight, it's about work supervision, the public works. Michael Tian has asked five questions, so some of them are quite uh quite wide in scope. What they ask about the system for supervision system of public works projects. And he also asked about establishment, expen- estimated expenditure, etc. But he did doesn't get the information. Well, regarding um the contract. The contracting system, whether are problems, uh project delay, accidents. Uh works being done not in accordance with plans and roads. So we have heard about a lot of complaints as well. For minor issues, let's say, for example, damaged roads. They all have something to do with this project supervision. In the reply, the administration said that there will be construction two point O. Uh there will be um digital devices used to assist project supervision. Well, according to their plan. In the middle of the year, there will be this digital supervision system. I would like to ask, well, how is it received by the trade? Can you tell us? We're starting from the problems of the MTRCL to now. What we can clearly see is that in the past decade, several decades, the construction sector. Has been making so much money that they think they they are above rules and the law. That there are problems with many different areas. So in relation to this construction two point O or real-time supervision. Uh can you give us more information? I would defer to Mr Lam. About the digital supervision system. Well, there is one contract where we will use the uh digital supervision system. It will cover a number of projects. Is positively received by the sector. Under the system, the condition of the site progress. Risk forms. Will all be integrated into the system. If need be, there may be alerts given, say, for example, before concrete is poured. Whether all the forms are in order and submitted on time. Alerts will be sent under the system. So that supervising staff and contractors will. Be aware of. The situation. After about eighteen months, we'll be able to confirm. Which is a better system and then they will be launched fully. May I supplement? Yes, construction two point O.
The construction industry embraces construction two point O because we can uh. Enhance the professionalism, the workers will be younger and we have prepared the S C S. Uh specification of competency standards. And our observation is that be it the Construction Industry Council, the trade associations and labor unions. They support the three directions of um construction two point O. Doctor Chen Cheng Tai. Well, I think I will ask my last question. First point. About information. I don't know whether this will be done um. In a form of an Excel worksheet or whether there will be an input system. And that there will be alerts and flags if for non-submission. Or whether there will be hurdles to go through. For example. If the risk form is not submitted, the system will be locked for further input of data. Is this technically feasible? Because in this way, we can monitor the workflow. Say if there is omission of risk forms, omission of signatures. Previously, they would be able to submit the form out of time, anytime they like. Can we design the system in such a way? That if the forms are not submitted, they will not be able to reach the next stage. If we can do that, obviously, we can improve supervision. A harsh approach is that they will be subject to financial penalty for failure to submit forms in time. But definitely, there will be wide repercussions from the sector. So I think at least. We should move in this direction to rectify um the outrageous situation happening at the moment. Who would respond, Mr Lam?
Um thank you, Dr Chang, for your comments. I agree with your observation because this system is not just about checking risk forms. This system is very sophisticated. It can provide comprehensive oversight of the site. Because apart from pouring concrete, we also have relevant work procedures such as. Bar fixing, formwork and approval of materials. So it's an all-encompassing system. If the system can be adopted by different trades, there'll be better communication. In fact, this can also be linked to the B I M, that is the Building Information Model. Modeling. So that even when works are completed, the data will be archived. Data will still be available after works are completed so that they can be easily retrieved on a single click. Because all paperwork should be traceable. And we do have high expectation. Of this system. As far as the industry's view is concerned. They agree that the system will help reform the industry. Last question from Dr Helena Wong before we conclude this session.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll move away from waterworks. Well, I'll see, I see the director is so delighted. I'd like to ask the V B W zero three eight. Public Works. And the quality of supervision. We know about the Shatin Central Lane, Hong Kong Station, Toka One Station, the whole scandal and other major works. We have a lot of mega work uh projects going on. The the industry has a very complicated. Subcontracting system. The government's supervision is not sufficient. My question is, what measure you have to ensure? That the quality of works will not be compromised and that they will be compliant with the system. For example, no alteration without approval. And also, you know, problems surrounding the couplers. What new thinking do you have? Well, for the lead in water incident, for example, the usual penalty is to stop the. Tender from participating in future tenders for six months. But after all, we have just a handful of contractors. In Hong Kong, so I want to know. What actual penalty you can have, which can serve deterrence whilst. Prom uh whilst ensuring the quality of works in Hong Kong. Uh Mr Lam Sa Hau.
That's a very good question. We just talked about construction two point O. We want to enhance professionalism, we want to have a younger generation of workers and we also want to be innovative. Now, the whole industry has a labor shortage. And some workers are not professionals. This is what we're working on. On innovation. We are working on a number of fronts. For example, we're introducing B I M, Building Information Modeling. In other words. What used to be a two-dimensional drawing plan will become a three D model. So it's like a video game. We can simulate the work procedures on computer in a three-dimensional manner. It is very convenient. Well, for example, if we change one drawing. Very often, in the other related drawing, there could be an omission. Because after all, to us is human. When we use B I M and turn it into a three D model, however, we can eliminate this problem. It will be changed in one go. We can also enhance safety at the same time. For example. If we learn that a certain layout will pose a hazard to workers, we can change it earlier. On supervision, there are two parts to it. For public works. We want to be innovative. Within the civil service, we have the Center of Excellence for Major Leaders. Every year. We plan to have forty or fifty colleagues. Who are tasked to oversee major projects. We would like to have them receive training. To enhance their leadership skills in supervising the projects. This will be introduced very soon. Around the middle of this year, we will be able to operate classes. This will be a pilot scheme for three years and then the. Result will be evaluated. As for main contractors, we have a supervision system. We have actually reformed the part about consultants, starting from October last year. We have compiled a register. And the contractor must be on that list or register before they are eligible for bidding government contracts. We have also broken down the list into different types. So that. We will not bunch the workload among the just a handful of contractors. Other contractors can also share out the workload. So that there won't be over-concentration. I think this will bring benefit to the whole industry. Thank you for attending today's meeting. The meeting's adjourned. The Special F C will take place at nine A M tomorrow. Thank you.